Mark, your question. The wall at 50th Street, or the third floor, or the second floor? Actually, I find it in the organs, but ten more. Not that we're going to want.
Please stand for a salute to the flag. A pleasure to receive this flag of the United States. And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all. Evening, everybody. The Borough of Seabright, in compliance with the Open Public Meeting Act, has provided adequate notice and date, time, and location of this meeting to the Edbury Park Press, filed notice with the Bolton Ward and the Clerk's Office, and posted notice on the Bolton Ward and the Borough offices and on the website. This meeting is open to the public, and we welcome you all. Thank you for coming. We'll have a roll call, please.
Councilman Bieber.
Here.
Ms. Bills.
Yes.
Mr. Cashmore.
Yeah.
Chairman Cunningham.
Here.
Mr. Giulio.
Yes.
Vice Chairman DeSao.
Yes.
Mayor Kelly. Mr. Lawrence.
Yes.
Mr. Lexi.
Here.
Mr. Schwartz.
Here.
Mr. Simeon.
Here.
We move on to 27 Center Street, has requested to be carried to November 28th meeting. Discussion about that. Everybody should have received that request. That was the one they're deciding whether it's a mother-daughter or two families, as you recall.
I'll make the motion to carry.
Thank you. Last motion? The last time? Yes. I'll second. So I'll put a roll call on that.
Oh, Councilman Bieber.
Yes.
Ms. Bills.
Yes.
Mr. Cashmore.
Yes.
Chairman Cunningham.
Yes.
Mr. Giulio.
Yes.
Vice Chairman DeSao.
Yes.
Mr. Lawrence.
Yes.
Mr. Lexi.
Yes.
Mr. Schwartz.
Yes.
Mr. Simeon.
Yes.
Okay, on to the minutes from September 12th, 2023.
I'll move the minutes.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Okay, Councilman Bieber.
Yes.
Ms. Bills. Mr. Cashmore.
Yes.
Chairman Cunningham.
Yes.
Mr. Giulio.
Yes.
Vice Chairman DeSao.
Yes.
Mr. Lawrence.
Yes.
Mr. Lexi.
Yes.
Mr. Schwartz.
Yes.
Mr. Simeon.
Yes.
On to the statutory and resolution.
I'll move the resolution. Chairman.
Thank you, Mark. That's 48 Normandy Place, just as you will remember. Second. Roll call.
Councilman Bieber.
Yes.
Ms. Bills.
Yes.
Mr. Cashmore.
Yes.
Let me just slide some of them, sorry. Mr. Giulio.
Yes.
Chairman DeSao.
Yes.
Mr. Lawrence.
Yes.
Mr. Lexi.
Yes.
Mr. Schwartz.
Yes.
Mr. Simeon.
Yes.
I wasn't, I couldn't step down. On to Mr. Lobiondo. 912 Ocean Avenue, Block 24, Lot 5, Volk Family's Cruel, construction of a three-story home.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to have to step down because I have certain relationships with that family.
Dr. David. As the records show, Mr. DeSao has stepped down from this application.
And I'm within 200 feet.
You're within 200 feet, okay. Thank you, Steve.
Can I just stop there?
People taking that. Welcome. Lobiondo.
Do we stand in this room or sit? It's what's preferred. Does it matter? So use the standing in the other room.
You've been sitting around Seabright for a long time.
Long time. Ladies and gentlemen, good evening. I'm going to be testifying as a witness tonight for my brother Paul, whose residence is over here.
We're going to have to stand here and swear again.
I swear again personally. You swear that that's why you are here tonight, to be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth? I do. And please say your name, tell your last name to the record. James Lobiondo, L-O-B-I-O-N-D-O.
How about you, Paul, who's going to testify as well?
He might answer some questions. Yeah, possibly. Sure. Please, where's your name, please, for that's why you are here tonight, to be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth? Yes. Say your name, please. Paul Lobiondo.
Thank you.
So if I'm dragging here a little bit tonight, I'm the old guy in the room now, tucking my six-year-old twins in at this time, along with myself usually, so if I'm a little slow, you're moving along with me. Just want to start off briefly with the history of this site, and basically the decision-making process that led up to tonight's meeting. Originally, prior to us purchasing the home, there was an older, single-family house on the property. Now, the previous owners, I think two before us, eventually took that single-family house down. It was actually, I looked at the tax maps, it was built in 1902, according to the tax maps, and from the conversations I've had with the previous owners, it was just determined it was too costly to renovate this existing structure. So here we are. After carefully reviewing the area and the surroundings, the single-family home in this area, obviously, is permitted and serves, we feel, as the highest and best use on the site. So we are here tonight seeking approval to construct that single-family home for my brother Paul, who's a longtime Seabright resident as well as I am, that lies just a few doors to the north of the proposed site. This lot, I think, fits the families better to build a newer structure, taking advantage of this lot. Just due to the fact that it's, you can have a much better view for the ocean, and I think it's just a better site for a house around. We have a lot of family friends, and just think we'd enjoy this parcel better than where he is now. Again, a permitted use in the R2 zone. On either side of the property, there are single-family residences. Across the street, we have a beach club, Surf Rider Beach Club, which, I'll get into that height. So that's the neighboring property across the street. So residences, residences on either side, across Surf Rider Beach Club, which, I had our architect, Jim Monver, before the meeting, send an email to him to verify that the highest point of our ridge is actually 44.3 for Surf Rider Beach Club across the street. To the west, obviously, we have the river. And I got a picture kind of, if anyone doesn't have their bearings. And are we marking per picture, or are you going to mark everything?
Yeah, well, we can do it as you go.
Okay. So I guess we'll mark this one first.
Mark that on A1.
Should bring that up to you.
Uh, yeah. Pass it around. There.
Call these in.
We'll mark that as A2, A1 being the architectural plan submitted. A2 is a photo of the subject property, with the home on the left and the right indicated as south and north.
Yeah. And basically, just wanted everyone to get their bearings if they haven't been to that site. That's basically, that's the picture shooting from, shooting from east to west, basically, of the property of the site. Yeah, so essentially, we're not asking for anything that doesn't really already exist in the area now, wasn't recently approved, you know, by this board, many members of this board. We designed the site with that in mind, and looked at the current densities on this street at that time, so we could properly conform with them as well. This is one of the reasons we believe the project works well on the street, provides a special reason for the variants that were, a couple of variances that we're requesting. I'll let Jerry, our architect, over here, in a minute, I'll let him follow up with some of the technical questions anyone has on the design and layout when I'm finished, but I want to talk a little bit about our setbacks and reliefs we'll be asking for tonight. So first, the front yard setback. Complies with the front yard setback in the R2 zone, we're asking for 25 feet in the front. We have 25 feet when we're asking for, which is permitted. Also, we laid out a little bit bigger setbacks on the side. On the ground level, we're at nine feet, where 7.5 feet is the minimum required in the R2 zone for the side yards to curtail the density a little bit. We felt we didn't need the whole lot, we didn't want to take over the whole lot, we wanted to provide a little bit, a little bit more of a buffer for our neighbors, so we have nine feet on the ground level. Now, the second floor has some bump outs that do go an extent of seven and a half feet, one being the fireplace side, or the south side, and then the other side, basically, have a little bump out on the second floor for a pantry. But those second floors do bump to seven and a half, but on ground level, we are at nine feet on both sides. I think a lot, Jerry testified at this as well, I think, kind of, you know, when you're looking at a building like that, on a flat kind of wall going straight up, I never really loved that look, so, kind of gives it a little, you know, jetty's are building in and out, and makes it a little bit more attractive, I think, driving from the north and the south. So that's why we kind of, you know, went with that look. But again, I'll let Jerry speak to that. So we will also be asking for the height slash third floor variance as well, which brings us to 41.67 feet. Many of the properties within the immediate proximity have also recently have similar heights granted by the board. So I kind of took the liberty of having our engineers shoot a few properties surrounding the proposed site that we're planning to build, and I guess we'll mark a few more here. So I guess 902 Ocean Avenue, I'll mark that first.
For purposes of record, that'll be A3, and you said that is 902 Ocean Avenue?
Yes. So 902 Ocean, which is coming around now, is 41.1, 41.1, so basically, essentially, we're seeing the height as what we're proposing tonight on that piece. And I have another picture coming around for, I think.
Did the other picture come back? I'll check. I don't think it's marked.
So again, that was, the one that's, the picture that's gone around, it's at 41.1 feet, so I do have another picture I'm going to be floating around, 822 Ocean Avenue, also just approaching 40 feet, 39.6 to be exact, is what we got there. Guess that one around next.
And that'll be Exhibit 4, 822 Ocean Avenue.
I mean, when you're ready for the next. Only have a couple more, guys. Or don't actually show until here.
Yeah, we're up to A5.
Okay. So A5, I guess will be 858 Ocean Avenue, which is also on the same side of the street, the last house. On that side, I'm going to show you guys, yielding a 38.2, but there was a little, a little error on the side of the surveyors. I asked them to shoot the highest point, and they actually shot the highest ridge and not this turret, which is significantly higher than 38.2, so just make a note that if we could, for the record, that they shot 32 to the ridge and not the top of the turret, or, he calls it his, John calls it his observation tower. So we'll say that observation tower height is significantly higher than that. So the red line doesn't indicate the proper height.
Right.
Yeah, you're right, Lance, it doesn't count the true height, because it's architectural enhancement.
It's the ridge.
Right, ridge, yeah, so that.
Or depending on the situation, but.
The number on there is the roof by the turret.
Part of the way up the form.
Yeah.
And that hasn't been there a long, huh?
Yeah. Sure has, the red roof.
Prior to the zoning change.
And then the last, I don't know where we're up to the last picture. A6, just Surf Rider Beach Club, showing 44.3 on the height for 931 Ocean Avenue. That's across the street. So so my long-winded point here, bringing all this up, is that, and I believe you're conforming to the most part for the surrounding community, both across the street and on the same side, basically, for all these pictures.
Beach Club. Where are these going to be?
So the, all the houses are on the same side of the street, the closest one, starting two houses down, at the height closest to ours, which is 902 Ocean Avenue, 44.1, which is just two houses away, so it's our subject lot, it's Mr. Wheeler, who's in, quoting, saying I hear, and then it's 902.
Four out of five images are on.
Same, they're all on the same street.
Riverside Ocean Avenue as you're heading along.
I understand, I didn't know how close they are.
They're not next to you.
They're outside.
Yes, well, one's two downs, the closest is two downs, I think that answered your question.
Ocean.
And then from there, eight of, 822 is three down, then the last one's four.
Were any of them new construction, or were they raised homes?
So one, 902 was new construction. 822 was raised and pretty much new construction. And Mr. Shemenas, obviously.
Well, there's a difference in the zoning, to raise, to allow existing feet, like on the, the red roof.
No, I understand that. The other ones are all newer construction, and the only old one that's not new is, would be Mr. Shemenas, the red roof property. All right, so, and the point, I think it's important to stress, and Jerry, can you give me the, which I'm going to actually pass these around for each of the board members as well? So wait till everyone has that.
So the lines on those ridges are not where they're supposed to be raised. On those, no, on those pictures, because one's at the top of the railing, one's not at the top of the peak of the roof. It's at a, one of the peaks of the building.
Yeah, the one line, the one older home is not correct. The one with the red roof.
The one with the railing. Railing, the railing on top, the one that's at the top of the railing. Yeah, it wouldn't be at the top of the railing, it would be at the floor on top of the house.
The numbers that are on the photos are what's the shot.
So everybody goes here.
Yeah, they're all, you can pick that up. No, yeah, they're not, yeah, that's not accurate. So when everyone has that, I'll fill it out.
And just for purposes of record, I've marked that as Exhibit A7, document entitled "Front Elevation A", with hand markings on the height calculation.
So, once everyone has that, the picture that I sent around, that Jerry sent around. With this picture, I'd just like to stress, if we complied with a two-and-a-half-story and 38-foot height restriction, which is permitted in this zone, it would actually net a higher building height at the highest part of the roof, so at the ridge. So that would actually be 46 feet high at the ridge of this roof, which Jerry's diagram shown, the outside number, is 46 feet high at the ridge. So, and that's allowed without any variances before this board in the permitted R2 zone. Now, I understand the reason being is that Seabright calculates the height at the center of the roof, so that's what really we're showing here, is if you go to the highest point of that roof, of the ridge, you're at the 46 feet, versus our proposed at 41.67. And the thing I like a little bit better about Jerry's design here is it pushes that top floor back a little bit, kind of like what you guys approved in the middle of town with the condo, I forget the names, it skipped me of that break. The break. So, and it's kind of like where we got our idea, I saw that, and we liked how it wasn't so offensive from the road. With this peak, I think it's a little more offensive at the 46, I'd rather, personally, if he drove down the road, I'd like the softer look of a step back, 41.67. So that's basically why I just had Jerry show these two. This was the first design that we kind of went through, and then I saw that, you know, that building going up, and I kind of liked that look. So this was basically draft one, draft two is what we did over here, so. Also, to be noted, in the B3 zone across the street, has a 42-foot height allowance, and the beach clubs basically are there or above on all their, because of the baseball elevator issues and the new BFEs that came out post-standing. So it's another reason why I think this is a unique, you know, particularly site is unique and addresses some special reasons for the variants, because you have similarly suited houses on that street with, within two to four houses away, and also, across the street, you have some high, some high uses in the B3 zone. And I know that's just not really, that is part of being weighted of what happens.
Let me stop you for one second, just to clarify what you're talking about here on this particular part of the application. This was your original plan, that is not what you're looking for.
No.
Correct? I'm just clearing it up for the record.
Sure.
And this is showing what the original plan with a slanted roof would have allowed.
Correct.
How much higher it would be.
Correct.
That's the reason you gave us.
Yeah, I just wanted to confirm.
Just wanted to put it in, it wasn't making sense for the record unless somebody cleared it out.
I appreciate you clearing it out, Jerry. So, just circling back to the, sorry about that, clears it up pretty concisely.
I wanted to make sure it wasn't something new that everybody didn't have on these plans.
I understand. So again, just to clarify, that B3 zone across the street, over the 42 feet in height, which all of us clubs are at, us and Sansons are actually over that. So, you know, it is unique in that it is, residence is in the middle of commercial with some high heights across the street, so I feel that it does one pretty nicely there. To jump to the rear yard setback we're asking for, so we'll be asking for the variance for the decks, which is part of the project, obviously. With this variance, we will be asking for 3.56 feet, where 15-foot setback is required. But I do like to note on the plan, on the deck, you see a bump out in the middle, that's why it comes shallow to the 3.56. Actually, most of the deck does hold six feet, so it just does, it gives it another architectural enhancement, and makes the deck, so not so, to be so flat. We feel that variance will not affect the neighbors, as the rear yard is really the riverside. We do hold the foundation back on average of 12 feet, pretty much on the back of the property, so the house itself is not really the violator as much as the decks is really my point, not to be intrusive on the neighbors. And, you know, many times I've been before this board and seen other approvals, it does seem that the rear yard variance is commonly granted with this board, I think that, you know, it is important to provide decks in the rear, you know, lends itself to private and outdoor space, which routinely used in a short town like Seabright, everyone in the summers, you know, on their deck in the back and enjoying, enjoying whatever you have in the nightfall, so. So that's, you know, basically addressing the rear, the rear yard variance. Anyone have questions on the rear?
So the deck is 5.5, and then the bump out is 6.
Oh, did you?
Oh, no, excuse me. 4.5. Right, right, okay. Roll call.
Closest part is 3.56.
We got to swear again. We haven't done it yet.
Please, where's your name, please, for that's why you are here tonight, to be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
And please, say your name, tell your last name to the record.
Chairman I.J. Regan, R-E-G-A-N.
You are an architect that has testified before this board, and.
Yes.
Anybody have an objection of his qualifications in the booth? If not, out of.
So maybe, if you want to explain that real quick, Jerry, I'll finish up, and you can probably jump back.
Probably 80% of the deck is at 5.56 feet setback from the property line, and in the middle, we bump it out a little bit, just to give a little bit more character to 3.56. But it's an open deck, there's no high walls, it's all metal, open rooms.
All right, I guess I'll just wrap up, and then Jerry can take the rest of it away then. So I just want to kind of go through the last few items I have, is parking. Proposed application, we actually are exceeding the parking requirements, providing eight parking spaces where the site, with this proposal, versus the three that's required, so we're certainly exceeding parking, we have plenty of room, so figure make some big garage doors, there's always got guests, and like everyone does with bigger houses in the summer, seems to be suited to that. So I know those were also AC units, I would love to address that, you know, where they're going. So they're located, right now, those units are located on the roof, which will, you know, which will basically provide the greatest buffer distance between the neighbors. So they're high-efficiency units, we always use, which have lower decimal levels and provide, you know, the maximum quiet enjoyment for both the neighbors and the people that are living in the house, so. Basically, in closing, we feel the proposed building is sessionally, and conforms with, and even exceeds some of the current setbacks with the excess side yards in the R2 zone. This will be aesthetically pleasing, we feel, will blend very well in uniform with the existing neighboring properties to the north and the south and across the street. We are providing front and rear egress on the lower levels, which is nice from a fire safety standpoint, there's more than one exit of the house. The new building will meet all the current FEMA and elevation requirements, which will be built to all the new hurricane-resistant codes. In the short term, I think we can all realize, it's nice to have, to come up with code, we can get a chance on these new structures. Also, we will be building more sustainable, which will help us enhance our community ratings with FEMA and eligible for lower insurance rates as well, so I feel that helps the town in that regard, so. I guess I'll turn it over to Jerry, if anyone has any questions with the property or the site.
One of hands up.
Yes.
Multiple times. Multiple counts.
And there's three photos. These are the renderings, one is, you see there, there's also renderings on the rear. So it's three renderings of each.
Well, these are not all the same.
Now, there's also a rendering of the rear from the riverside.
And this is for purposes of record, I've marked as exhibit A8, the architectural rendering set of three. Front view and two, two rear view.
Did you want to toss them in?
We're all on the record. Pretty much the lower level is, uh, two car, or four car garage on each side of the main entryway, which is just a, um, an elevator with a stairway to the, to the first floor. On the first floor is an elevation, uh, seventeen, which is well above the requirement for FEMA plus the added three feet that Seabright has. Um, and we pretty much have a lot of glass at the front, a lot of glass at the back to capture views. I also stepped it back for balconies and also angles in the corner, uh, which helps with sheer wall design for structure. It also gives each room a panoramic view instead of just a straight on view. And we did the same thing on the second floor. And the third floor, we stepped it back, so as James mentioned before, it's not a full wall going up forty-two feet. So, the top floor, everything steps back away from the perimeter on the outside. Um, and they got more windows and glade balconies to capture the view. Any, uh, questions?
In the drawings you show planting, are they just for estate purposes or are they actually?
Well, they were probably, I mean, it's hard to grow, if you want to keep the whole site, uh, stone for drainage and also keep it, you know, uh, for maintenance purposes. We will probably have planters, um, in the front stoop area and maybe across the side.
But that tree's not missing.
Right.
Okay, just wanted to be first about it, the board proved that we're not having someone say, hey, but they approved that reason on that.
Does the elevator shaft go up past the roof?
No.
So there's room inside that there floor?
Yes. So it's not penthouse for the elevator. No penthouse for the elevator.
The, uh, doors in the back?
Yes.
The garage doors?
Yes.
That's, uh, no particular reason except for water flow through.
Boat, bring up a, you know, kayak or rowboats in.
Oh, okay.
I got that a different Steve actually liked what you did with this house, it's kind of cool.
I have a question about the top floor. Now, first of all, it's a reasonable house, I look forward to seeing it. I completely understand the implications of this, right? Because it means you have some tough choices on how you want to do things. I guess the question I have, and I've only been on the planning board for two years, is we have consistently pushed back on houses that have a third floor, a top floor that's lower than fifty percent of the floor below. I believe that's code, I don't know, I'm going to ask for our barb engineer that question, but this one's at seventy percent.
Correct.
And the challenge that we have is we have people not, you're not the firsts, that have come in with that and it's driving towards potential of a full three stories on top of the garage.
Well, that's a more reasonable.
I know that, but I believe the code states that the top floor in a four level home cannot be more than fifty percent of the floor below.
Correct. And that's, uh, they call that the half story, I guess, for zoning, and it's called habitable ladder in the building code. And that's where you get the limitation of a certain percentage of the four below, and it's a third. Um, and it's not considered a story above grade.
Yeah, so, so, uh, my point is, I, I understand this, I understand the reason you do this. Because it's basically saying, if we, if we go back to something else other than what we've showed here, we can make the building much higher without requiring variance.
Correct.
I understand that completely. What I'm not understanding is why we don't need a variance for a, a fourth floor, in fact, if we're a third floor, however you want to call it, that exceeds the maximum allowable space for the floor below.
Well, if we were under that requirement, there wouldn't be a third floor. So now we're asking for the variance for the fourth floor, because we want to make it bigger.
I don't understand that.
You're asking for a variance.
Oh, you are asking, yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, a third floor, I believe. Correct. You're asking for a third floor.
Is that true, is that true if it was less than fifty percent of the year there?
It's actually a third.
Can I say something?
Yeah.
Erwin actually wrote this up before, I've been spending a half an hour looking through the ordinance, and it's, it's not in our ordinance, it's in the building code. That's why I couldn't answer your question, because I'm not an expert on building code. Uh, so, um, it's something that they're going to have to deal with when they get to the building department. You can get, you can get denied there.
I mean, with that, it's the building code, we'd have to sprinkle the building and do fire rated construction.
They have to make special accommodations.
Yes, definitely.
In order to create this, this extra space on that floor.
Yeah.
I'm dealing with that long range right now before the board's. So I'm sorry I couldn't answer your question before, but that's the reason, because inside of this code, it's in the building code.
Dave, I'm confused by it, because that subject has come up multiple times here.
Well, there may be people on this board that know the code, the building code better than me, maybe worked in building departments or wherever. I have it. As, as a town engineer, I don't deal with building codes.
So I'm understanding where that leaves us.
Well, it leaves him maybe in a pickle.
It's a variance.
We can, we can decide to approve it or not.
We can't create a variance for the building codes, if that leaves building code, because of what this board says. The board can say, you don't interrupt people, people or anything, the building code says you do, they got us, they were, they got us what we said. So, they've got to be built.
And they're missing the requirements, they don't know that right now, they have to be met.
But, but from the land use perspective, on the variance application, it's for the additional three feet height that they're over. And the fact that it is by definition in our ordinance, a third story and not a half story. So they need two variances related to, to that.
Which they're asking for.
Which, which they ask for notice for, and that's what the board will be weighing the criteria for C variance relief.
Now, if we, if we met the ordinance, two and a half stories, and that, it's not a half, uh, square footage, it's a third of the square footage of the second floor. The construction would be typical residential construction, they call five B, okay? But since we're not asking for that, we're asking for a third floor and a forty, a forty-one foot height, forty-one foot eight inches height. We have to go to five A construction, and we have to sprinkle the building to meet the building code requirement for what we're proposing. So it will meet all the, all the construction codes, not only for fire, but for flood. And will meet and exceed.
Okay, the only thing I'm saying, Mr. Chairman, is there are people a lot smarter than the other subject, sitting, sitting here and in the other building. Right, and I know that we've approached the subject many times in prior meetings over the last few years, and we have consistently had an issue with houses looking for more than fifty percent of the third floor being approved.
That's correct.
And I don't understand how it's different here. If somebody can explain that to me, I, I'm all ears. I don't think it is different.
I quote it several years ago.
It's not different at all. They're asking for three, where two and a half is allowed. But I guess what I'm hearing is we have no jurisdiction over that.
Oh, oh, that's what we do.
We, we, okay. It's up to you.
I would say the only difference is don't focus on the percentage issue.
Right.
The, the issue is, is the story and height.
The fifty percent issue is a, is a construction issue.
Yeah.
Which is not before us, the third story is.
And, and I think, I think we've seen this quite often, and thirty-three percent is a very small percentage. So I believe, since I've been on the board anyway, fifty percent has been more the kind of, okay, we would grant, we would agree to it up to about fifty percent. Um, but we've never gone as high as seventy percent, not while I've been there. What's on the third floor, by the way?
Two bedrooms.
What else?
That's it.
Two bathrooms?
Two bedrooms.
Are there bathrooms?
That, yeah, the wood bed, wood bedrooms, and balconies, and also utility balcony.
Closets.
So it takes like two master suites on the top.
Yeah.
See, if you still be on the one thing that I would think would be good, is, and, and this is just my opinion, if we, if we say yes, you go to the building department, they say no.
The onus is on me on that point, though.
I'm sorry?
The onus is on me in the building department. And which way I want to build, it's actually much more expensive to build what I'm proposing versus this. This is cheap, it's a lot higher. The onus for me, it's more expensive, I agree, because you have to either sprinkle or double sheetrock.
Yeah.
Because of the height, so it has to be sprinkled.
That, that wasn't my point. My, my point is, you, it's supposed to be compartmented between the way we do things, between the planning board and the building department. Right? And if, if, if the CLA is the building department, who's going to say no? Because it exceeds the building.
The, the, the building department won't say no. That, what the building department will say, if you're building this far, you need to do certain things that fit within the code.
Correct.
Which they're going to have to do, the building department's not going to say no. The reality is. The architect is saying that they have a solution, but that the building department will allow by providing sprinklers and other amenities. Right. They'll go beyond in a different use, a different building room. And the, and, and this architect just, just provided that testimony. If he's wrong, then they might be right back here again.
Okay, so I guess I'm, I'm done, but my point is, if we vote yes, and the building department allows them certain things to allow them to have a full third floor, we are effectively looking at three story, four story buildings in this headwind floor.
Well, each is supposed to be on its own, each, each application is supposed to be thought of on its own, but.
I thought this planning board was making an effort to include that from happening.
How about this?
I don't know where you got that from.
We've talked about.
You've talked about it multiple times. I don't remember one, except the, the two downtown buildings.
Frank, Frank's gone longer than I have, and he may have to say, oh, I have. It's come, I've only been on the planning board on a couple of, yes.
I've only been on about thirty years.
Oh, that's, that's.
Think more than that.
I think more than that.
Definitely more than that.
Yeah, no, I'm just dreaming, but, you know, I.
I remember two buildings, and they did similar things where you got, where they got their idea to do it, to shuffle it back and break up the front of the building.
And they were.
But I'm, I'm not, I'm not arguing for them. I'm very interested in what particular places that was involved with, because I don't remember it.
I can tell by the look on your face, okay? I, I'll, I'll be happy to go back, we've discussed this at least five or six times in the last twenty months that I've been on this planning board. And we have consistently asked, you're limiting the third floor to fifty percent. Yes, we are. What is going to be up there? It's going to be a den or a bedroom. We have talked about that five or six times.
That, that's because they're trying to avoid having a sprinkler in the third floor because it doesn't trigger that in the building.
I don't think it's about that.
I think, I think it's part of it, because that's what you were saying.
I think it's about how, how we want.
It may have come back in two minutes.
We, we have turned down downtown.
No, that's why, that's why we need further.
We have.
Not while the applicant comes in without claim, they, they, they do keep it underneath a certain, I mean, that's what I'm arguing, that's what I understand.
They're trying, everybody's trying to maximize the amount of square footage they can. Because of course, they don't think that the lot is expensive, they want as much space as you can possible, everybody wants that. That's, that's normal. But what I, my understanding and what I've seen, and I've voted this very consistently is, when you, when you get well past fifty percent, seventy percent, and, and when I look at this, it looks like a three story home, it looks like a three story home. Yes, it's set back a little bit, but it's seventy percent. Is that the look we want? Whereas I believe we've been consistent in the, certainly in the downtown area, that you don't want these monolithic, everything square and, because if, because if you wanted to maximize, everything would just go, shh, square boxes, right?
Well, that's why you think there's a property on the zone.
Yes.
You don't, you don't set precedence in zones.
Correct, but.
No, downtown is completely different than on the average.
I, I, I don't know, I think when you start looking at ocean land.
Same road.
Same road, and, and you, if you start seeing, if you start seeing everything at that same height, all three stories, you may not be very happy.
I mean, your feature's going to be the same, it's the same, same road. So, you can't, you can't just say it's the same road.
Well, no, it's the same, no, I was thinking a different point.
Oh, I'm sorry.
At least, at least in my short period, it was inconsistent on this.
Yes.
And those conversations, and the consistent point has been, we are trying to avoid zoning to full three story access. And we've discussed the fifty percent point as a reasonable stop point. We have discussed that several times over the last twenty years. And we've been consistent.
Yes.
I would agree with you.
Could I add also, that if we made it fifty percent, we would still have to do a different type of construction to get it approved by the building.
That may be true.
Right. But either way, um, we're asking for three stories, it's going to be designed and built to meet the codes for a three story residence.
So Mr. Chairman, yes, you know, it is obviously understood here. Uh, why then, what Kevin's saying, why do multiple come in with less than fifty percent of the third story? It doesn't trigger anything else from the.
No, you could build regular construction.
It's regular, so it does trigger something.
Yes.
Okay, I think that is.
In the building department, yes, it does trigger something.
Okay, so that's fine, I mean, that's all I was trying to, that's, right.
You have to fire rate, it's actually fire rated.
Right, okay. I'm, I'm just, I'm just going to be just that.
With more than fifty percent?
It's a third.
A, a third, so, so it's thirty percent.
Yeah, forty-three percent.
For the building code, they, they, they call it habitable ladder, they don't even call it a story, it's kind of, or less than that.
I agree with Erwin, though, we, we have spent a lot of time trying to stick to the two, two and a half stories, there's not that much. Um, and, you, you want to say something?
I'm just, I, I don't understand why the variance would be needed. I mean, can you build a house on this lot with variance-free application?
Yeah, just didn't want this option with the, I don't, I don't like this roof, and that's forty-six feet.
I know, you, you present that for the front elevation, show us the side elevation and compare that to your left side elevation on your front. You see a peak versus a big box that extends over the, um, allowable elevation. So, you know, you're, you're only presenting part of it, which are there, like, you look at the side.
You're presenting more, it sounds attractive, to tell you that.
But your opinion?
Yeah.
I was trying to understand, why do we need variances on this little lot?
Mark, do you have a problem with the rear, the rear?
I do.
You did, you have a problem.
I, you're coming to talk about being with the right density, when you're asking, you know, we're pushing this thing right out to the bulk, bulkhead, and we're, we're trying to build this thing up to a third story to make it a five bedroom place on such a narrow, a small lot, on a very narrow piece of land. So, in my opinion, and I'm not a builder, or a planner, engineer, I think you're overbuilding yourself. Which in a sense, it makes a need for, for variances. That's just my opinion, I'm trying to understand why we need to go, you know, why you're asking for all these variances. That's all. That's my one personal opinion.
In my opinion, I, I do think it looks a lot nicer than typical.
I don't know, you already pointed out the similar, no, I don't want to. Okay, that's.
So we communicate here to the public.
And I, that's why.
I'm just curious.
Yeah, well, is anybody else up?
I didn't have a pair of words with their testimony.
Each story is eight feet, right? And the top is only seven, seven.
Yes.
Am I not sure? Right, the top is only seven, seven. Inside height?
No, the garage would be ten.
The garage.
But the, the entry level is two feet higher than that, so that would be eight foot on the lower level, nine foot on the main level, and then eight foot on the second, on the next floor, the other two levels.
I see, uh, was it eight feet? Eight and an inch or something?
Yeah.
That's the inside, right?
The garage.
And then the next one's on eight.
Should be nine.
I think it's nine and eight, no, it's the, it's the outside measurement, John.
Okay.
It's a section of the ceiling.
So it's, ceiling height is nine feet, just over nine feet on the first floor.
And eight on the second.
And just over eight on the second, and. And just over eight on the second, and nine plus on the third.
So the third could actually come down.
Well, the third floor has different heights, because, again, to give us more character and not have it go straight up. Not only do we step it back from the perimeter on all four sides, it also has different heights, too. So the lower height is actually two feet lower than what we're asking for at the main level.
Doesn't really look like that, but here it looks like that on the.
Yeah, this is just from here. That's the forty-one foot eight inches we're asking for. These was here, or down two foot lower than that. Again, just to give it a little more character and not have it go straight up, you know, four stories. Plus also, the heat slide angles back, again, give it some more character and not have it that straight up four stories. And also to give the material more panoramic view of the ocean and the river.
Do they see, do they see the ocean from the second floor?
Yes.
So now we walk by these parts?
See, not from the second floor, but.
A little bit. But definitely, you can see it from the third floor.
The side, yeah, from the third floor. Secondary block on the side, so get a side shot.
Okay.
But also because of the angles on each one, if you're looking in between the two beach clubs, you would have a view of the ocean.
But I'm sitting here with my dad, and as I'm before, I'm not seeing the ocean. We walk by these parts.
Yes.
Mr. Lovey, I said in the beginning, this is a beautiful house, and I'm looking forward to seeing it. And I also understand the negative implications of this, both for you as well as for the town. I understand that. If you had to live within the fifty percent limitation on the top floor, how big of a deal would that be?
I have to quickly discuss my brother Paul. I'd have to see with Jerry, too, what that leaves us up top, the elevator, everything, and how much room he needs, and what's actually left.
Because it's a very slippery slope for us, right? And it's nothing against his property. I love the house, and it's going to be beautiful. But as we allow it to go from thirty-three to fifty-five to seventy, and then it's eight, we now have everybody coming in and saying, three-story buildings all the way throughout the whole town. There's precedence.
Yes, no, there's not.
There's no precedence.
There's no precedence, no, but you know how people are.
I mean, everybody does, they would talk about.
The precedence is soon ahead of sort.
No, I understand that. But what people present is exactly what James is presenting. Well, the house next to me is forty-two, and the house two over is thirty-nine point nine. Because that's how we look at these things. And I would imagine that the next applicant's going to say, well, I got seventy. Let's ask for seventy.
How tall's the cashmere house? I'm saying forty-one, same height. Forty-one point one or forty-one point five or something like that? I don't have any of this. I think we're like a four-inch difference. I'm just curious. If you go to fifty percent of the second floor, I think he's going to live somewhere around three hundred and fifty square feet. That's what, I think that's what's going to happen. How do you see it? I see it as something. Is that forty-one you got? I can see all the way you want.
He's got jeans.
So you'd be forty feet higher according to that exhibit than the cap four house.
But if I had a required.
Point seven?
It says forty-one point one.
Okay, okay, so forty-seven feet higher. Just keep, where are my top floors stepped back? Like, I saw the building downtown. I kind of liked that. That's why I did it like that. It's also going to continue. I think the height is the issue. I personally, Mark, I don't have a problem with the rear. That's just my personal opinion. The rear, I don't have that impact. I don't want to hear from the neighbors, but I don't think I have that impact sitting with them.
You know, it's a sum of totals.
I know, I get it, I'm just saying, like.
You're building a lot.
Right.
You talk about the three-foot setback to the deck, but in reality, you gloss over the setback to the basement. The lower floor wall, that means a variance also, so it's twelve feet as opposed to fifteen feet is required. So it's, you know, because spin this anywhere you want. It's a beautiful building. You're right, it is. We're asking for five bedrooms and a lot of other stuff here. So regardless of where you count as two, three stories, whatever it is, it's still a big structure. It requires variances on a lot, and I haven't seen, don't understand the need for variances.
I think for the balcony back, I think it's just taking greater advantage of the river. That's the review.
We haven't heard how it impacts the neighbors yet.
Yeah, we haven't heard from the neighbors, right. That's why I would invite you.
Is there anybody else on the board that has questions? Well, if we want to go to fifty percent, we would still be considered a three-story building in terms of the building code. So we would still have to do the type of construction that we're planning to do now. So that would have no bearing on the building code. It would still be a three-story. Yes. Are you asking or you're telling?
No, I'm agreeing with you. Take, take, take.
Let's open up to the public. Is there anyone in the public? Looks like we have a lot of neighbors here, so let's get started. Please.
Come forward.
Mr. Wheeler.
Please raise your right hand. Do you swear the testimony you already gave here tonight should be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth? I do. And please state your name to the record. Edward Wheeler. And your address.
Then you're immediately next door to this house, right? You're immediately next door to this house?
Yes. I just want to say, me and my wife, we've looked at the house, and we think it's a nice project. And know what these young fellows have done in the town, other buildings, other projects, they've done a very nice job. Mr. Riggin here, the architect, I think he did a fine job there. The only concern I have is with the grading and the curb cuts. How are they going to get in and out of this property? Has anybody done any engineering? I'm not aware.
There's a curb cut right in the middle of property town, which is what we plan to keep. We're not adding any more curb cuts. We're not making it any wider than what's there now.
As far as the grading?
Grading is just going to be slightly elevated a little bit to get the waters. But it's all going to be spelled, so there's not going to be any water in the wall over there. And there's not going to be any true elevation.
There'll be tangibles?
No tangibles, no.
Anyway, what happened with the project? I think it's, these fellows have been good neighbors. I think they should get a.
Mr. Riggin, so you don't have a problem with that?
I haven't.
Mr. Wheeler, I'm sorry. Honestly, Mr. Riggin, you have no problem.
Anyone else in the public? Steve?
I'd like to address some of the comments that have been going back and forth. I'm their neighbor, everything that I had said about them doing a great job in town, the way they run their business, the property directly affected by it. It's all been very, you know, good over the years, and you call it my neighbor. So at any rate, I just want to address some of the comments that have been going back and forth.
I think I want to.
Raise your right hand to be sworn. You swear the testimony you already gave here tonight should be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
Yes.
And please state your name, value, license to the record.
Stephen Cashmore, C.A.S.H.M.O.R.E.
And your address?
Nine oh two Ocean Avenue. Seabright. Okay, so Erwin, just to address some of your comments, my house is a full three floors, and there's no problem getting the building permit for that. It is a fully sprinkler building. So with us approving, with, I'm sorry, with the board approving this, they won't have any problem getting a permit. And then the three and a half, two and a half stories versus three stories argument. A big part of those applications and conversations, because I sat here on the board with them, work for homes downtown, and when you have our highly congested downtown area, the biggest objection from the neighbors and I think on the board was that it gives you an overcrowded look that these structures that go to full four floors, the garage, the three floors above, kind of overshadow everything on the side. This isn't that type of case, where they have a nice size lot. It's probably one of the larger lots in our area. This doesn't overshadow anything. It's fairly typical construction. There's a lot of tall homes in Seabright. And if you get into more Seabright, where you get more lots and people are spread out a little bit as we are, you don't have that effect of taking away light or free airspace. So this won't, this isn't going to overcrowd anyone. You could hear Ed say that he doesn't object to the height. It's cute, which is probably my house, I might have a little problem with that, but. But at any rate, when you start, when you start talking about thirty-eight feet, forty-one feet, that's not perceptible to the naked eye. You have engineers out there shooting elevations with sophisticated equipment, and they can tell you if one building's an inch or two higher than the other or lower than the other. But to the naked eye, thirty-eight feet or forty-one feet is really not perceptible. You just can't tell. And, or as far as your objections about there being variances, the variances are very minor in nature. Their twelve-foot rear yard, which goes down to six-foot width along the river, is still farther back than most of the homes along that road. I mean, maybe up where your neighbor are, you're more than, you're a little more away from the river than that.
Not my deck.
Not your deck? What is your deck?
My deck's only about sixty.
Sixty, yeah, but if you look to the houses just to the south of this, they're pretty much over the bulkhead or a few feet back to the bulkhead. So this backyard is more than the average house, and the deck is still back more than quite a few of the houses there. And the nine-foot setbacks on the side, there are three houses directly to the south of that, which maybe have three or four feet at the most, side yard setbacks. So while there are a few variances, they're, again, they're very minor in nature, very minor in nature. That was pretty much everything I had.
Thank you.
Anyone else in the public? If not, public portion is now closed. Discussion from the board or motion?
Can I just make one comment?
Yes, of course.
The site does slope towards the highway, Ocean Avenue. I'd like to just put a note on the plan, any covers lawyers have to run to the front. It appears that both side yards also slope to the front, so that's good. I want to make sure no neighbors are affected.
Agreeable?
Yes.
Any other discussion from the board?
Hi.
Thank you.
I really appreciate what Steve, his comments are, because in perception of the size of the lot, and, you know, we do look at homes that are in the smaller lots, they look like towers. This doesn't. This almost has a perception that's nine and a half floors. You know, because the third floor is pushed back on all sides, right?
Yes.
So it's pleasing to the eye. It's definitely beautiful. And you see a lot of, you see enough property on each side, so it looks like the house fits. So, you know, what Steve said, we're.
Yeah, I tend to have a reason to say.
Saying, you know, it's, you know, we look at houses, and it's, how many times are really the two and a half stories or three floors, right? And they look like this, right? They look like this, but he's filled it up, because he can't with all the other things that he has to do for the building work. So, you know, I'm good with that.
Yeah, I'm good, Mr. Chairman. I agree with Maggie. You know, I've been pretty hard on a lot of the options that come in with the third story. You can tell us about the problem downtown properties on the side streets. And on the side street side, yeah, and the side streets are completely different. It's a different animal than this. There's no precedence in zoning, just because you, that's why they call for variances. That's why we exist, to grant variances when they're appropriate for the property. And in this case, this property is appropriate for what's being requested here. I think it is aligned with what we're seeing in Ocean Avenue.
Remembering that the whole back end is open to the river.
Yeah.
That makes a big difference.
Absolutely. And the fact that Mr. Wheeler's speaking, and the fact that Mr. Cal's speaking, and they have no objection, and they're two of the most impacted people by this, I think I have to take that into consideration. If they were sitting, if Mr. Wheeler was coming forth going, please don't use your gun if you're going to kill me, I'd like to have a different reaction, but he's not saying that. I mean, he's saying, please approve it. So I think it's appropriate for the site. I think it, I think it fits the site, and I'm all with it.
Anyone else?
I don't know. I think it's a beautiful house. But, you know, I have the same thing. I have a fifty percent third story, too. But if he does it like that.
You're not downtown.
I don't want to.
You're not downtown on the side street?
No.
Well, you're on the side street.
Yeah.
He's on the side. He's on the side of the road.
Yeah, you know what we call that downtown?
Well, it's not downtown, it's a side street.
Yeah, it's more of an open neighborhood.
Yeah, it's a right.
Yes.
It's an open neighborhood.
Absolutely. Those are tightly packed little houses.
A lot more setbacks in place.
And I can relate to going too high, because, you know, the house around me got a little higher, and I can't see the ocean from the third floor. But he doesn't have anybody next to him. All the people in the opposite.
Does next to him, but not in front or back.
Yeah, opposite. A word about where you're getting.
Erwin, you said your piece before.
Well, I'll just, I'll say it one more time. A lot of things have been said here tonight, and I think, I think the house is beautiful. I think it fits nicely in location. I think the family is an incredibly outstanding family in the town. My concern is the nature of the third floor down. I do believe it's a slippery slope. I would hope that we can encourage them to look at a fifty percent from the third floor. I understand that has some implications. That would be my preference in this area. It's at seventy percent right now, right?
Seventy.
Elizabeth, anything?
No, I think it's fine. It doesn't look like a third floor, as far as that goes. It looks like maybe an attic, because it just has the small windows and windows down. No, I have no problem.
You could put little points on it, too.
Because of the location, too. It is open near almost, it's directed back. So you're not going to be blocking anybody.
More, Mark? Send your piece, your satellite piece, I'm done. I'm going to carry my motion.
I'll make a motion.
A second.
You can go rock off, please.
Counting the dealer?
No.
The first? Yes. Chairman?
Yes.
Mrs. Julia?
Yes.
Voice? Yeah. Mr. Lawrence?
No. No.
Mr. Lexi?
Yes.
Mr. Schwartz?
Yeah, I'm like that.
Mr. Zalina?
I think it's a beautiful, well, it is a beautiful application, but it doesn't, I don't have any compelling reasons for it not to. Another reason I'm hoping.
Motion taken. Five, five, three.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations. And I'll see the river.
Excuse me, Mr. Wheeler.
We will, we will open, I'm looking at one.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Nice job. Anyone in the public have a question?
Your board has asked.
We are now going to open to the public.
Oh, good.
We've stated ready for the record.
Thomas Margo. Living in One Beach Square, and returned here to represent my elderly parents. So initially, I'm going to.
All right, take it outside. We're still on the inside.
This is about a matter that I was here or back on March fourteenth, two thousand twenty-three, was for six Willow Way, there are amended variances. We own the house.
If there's a few family?
No, no.
Six Willow Way.
After I listened to this presentation, I wish I came to object at the first thing, but. If you guys remember, it's the Tattlemans, it's six Willow Way, it's block twenty-seven, lot seven point zero one. They came back for an amended variance because somehow. They came back for an amended variance because somehow the house got eleven feet closer...
Higher to our...
To our house. Magic, I guess, and they came here and said it's some sort of error. And I came to object, so look, we didn't come to the first variance application because they're going to be eighteen feet away. And it's a very high house, it might be as high as this one, you'd have to discuss it here, and it's a block, and it's, puts us in a shadow. And the more I heard the questions were raised, I really wish I came to the first one and said, that's not right. But I'm here because, um, I think they moved in, and I think they applied for CO last week. I called, and they hadn't complied with the conditions that the board, uh, put in their resolution for number twenty-two dash zero one. They were, they're supposed to put a burn to make sure the water wouldn't run into our property. They were supposed to make sure no lighting was directed at our home. Uh, if there's a retaining wall, they're supposed to be complying with whatever the board said they should do. Very big air conditioning units that are still not screened, they were supposed to screen it. And I think one of the more important things is the grading contours, because you let them build on almost every inch of the block.
I'm going to break your heart right now.
What's that?
This board cannot do anything.
Wow.
You need to go to the...
I just want to put this, I spoke to Mr. Bieber off the record.
So this board has no enforcement powers. But you know, you got to go to the construction, that's what the chair...
I just wanted to let you know, it actually happens too.
You're always watching the clock, boys, but you, you, you'll get zero satisfaction from us.
But if they have to come back, look, I don't know if the...
Well, if they have to come back, you should be talking to us, because they're going to have to notice that they're not here. So it's kind of inappropriate, you should be talking to us about applicants.
Well, I was just looking at your legal document, and I just wanted to let you know I wasn't complied with, and I'll take whatever steps we have to.
But those are code enforcement.
Yeah, okay.
That, that's the proper place.
It is.
I mean, just my neighbor can tell you, but I, I think it's not appropriate for him to be discussing applicants that might come in force if the applicant's not here.
Yeah, I mean, public comment, you can tell us what you want, but code enforcement is where you need to go. If, if there's a violation of our resolution and conditions of the reservation, that's, that's where enforcement happens.
Well, I think this encouraged me to come to almost all your meetings as a resident of Seabright, to express my concerns.
We're very happy to have you.
I will be back, and hopefully they didn't get the C O, but we'll find out.
So they'll be noticed if they, if they try to come back with variance anyway, so that may look up.
Well, that's if someone picks it up, they didn't pick up an eighteen-foot...
Pick it up now, that's very important.
Well, I'm recording it now, so, but I hope you guys would want to know that sometimes people don't follow what they're supposed to do.
Dave, this was one we, you were going to follow up with, or have...
This one I'm not involved in, uh, Greg, the town engineer, uh, he, the kids, they know that.
But he didn't tell me whether they granted the CO or not.
Yeah, he actually probably wouldn't know. Ed Wheeler would know.
Yeah.
That's, that's hard to make.
Well, he said his inspector was going to have a Friday, and he promised me whether he's doing the CO, they would need the resolution to make sure...
Don't count, you can count on it. Now, now, town has your, her finger on it.
I'm being killed on this inspection. I can't believe that they could be hitting teeth on the wall.
Well, they were eleven feet. They were supposed to be eleven feet, and my house, and they moved eleven feet closer.
I thought this was where they'd stay right here.
Okay, so when you know, who tells?
It's around, so.
I'm, I'm sorry to break your heart like that, but, uh, we can't do anything for you, and I apologize.
No, that's okay, I'll, I'll be back.
Thank you for coming.
Take care.
Is there any other business before the board this evening? If not, then we have a motion closed.
I'll take mine.
Are you going to turn?